We're still establishing what our ground rules are going to be in this new virtual world that we are going to start operating in. But just so you know, if we were in the council chambers and if there were people physically present in the council chambers and they wanted to speak, we would call on them first and then we would identify who on the Zoom call wants to speak as well. And you would indicate that by raising your hand. And we'll make every effort to call on those individuals in the order that they indicated they want to speak. Again, the same rules as if you were in the council chambers. We would ask anybody who participates virtually to state your name, state your address, and make comments that are relevant to the particular item that is under consideration at that time. You would be limited to the same number of minutes of speaking as you would if you were in the city council chambers. Looking here real quickly to see if there's anything else that I should mention this evening. I think that's probably all I need to mention at this time. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that there will be the same kind of ground rules that would apply to anyone speaking virtually if they were in the room. And we'll try and do it in the order of those in the room present first and then online. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, the agenda actually indicates that we would be saying the pledge of allegiance. And we thought if we were participating from the council chambers, we would be doing that this evening. But because of the technology issues we've had this evening, we'll have to pass over that one. The next item on the agenda is the agenda approval. Jim, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor. We're going to ask that item 5P be removed from the agenda.
Jim, we're having a difficult time hearing you in this room.
Are you unmuted?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Just, we're picking up background voice.
Okay, we've got
There we go.
Item 5P be removed from the agenda. And then item 5Q was the follow-up from the discussion we're supposed to have at the work session regarding the animal rescue league contract. So we will remove that from the consent agenda, but we may be taking action on it during the non-consent agenda or at the staff comments.
Any other changes, counsel?
Five P, but what was the other items being removed?
5Q is the item that was going to be the follow-up action from our work session item that we didn't get to this evening. And so our intent would be if we have time and get to it at the end of the council meeting, we will have the presentation by the police chief and then possibly take action on item 5Q.
Okay, thank you.
Jim, just for my clarification, are we moving that to the non-consent agenda and then discussing it there?
Yes, we certainly could do that. Yeah, that makes sense. Move it to the non-consent agenda.
Okay.
5Q.
So with the complete removal of item 5P and moving of 5Q to the non-consent agenda, do we have a motion to approve the agenda? Second. We have a motion and second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Temple?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to public communications. I guess the only thing that we have under public communications is just a little bit of discussion about what our expectations would be for members of the public to participate virtually. The only other thing that I would mention in addition to what I've already said is that if you are going to be participating virtually and you do want to make comments, we would ask that you turn on your video so that we can actually see you and talk to you when you're making your comments. We realize that some people may not have the video capability on their computer. And if that's the case, just state that for the record and then we'll know that. But otherwise, we would like to see who it is that we are speaking to, just as we would in the city council chambers. So we would make that request. This would be the time for members of the public to make comments on anything that is not otherwise on the agenda. And if you have an interest in doing that, please raise your little electronic hand and let us know that you would like to speak. Cindy, are we seeing anyone? Cindy, has anybody indicated that they would like to speak under public communications?
No one has indicated that. Can you hear me?
Now we can, yes.
Okay.
So no one has indicated that they would like to speak to us under public communications?
That's correct.
Thank you. We will then move on to public hearings. And we have two public hearings this evening. The first one is to conduct a public hearing and consider resolution number 21-98 approving and authorizing execution of a development agreement by and among the City of Johnston Set Point Mechanical Holdings LLC and Set Point Mechanical Services LLC. And we will open this public hearing at 7:42. And who is going to take the lead on this?
Good evening. This is Adam. A little under the weather, so I won't be turning on my camera for you. But this is a proposed development agreement between the City of Johnston and Set Point Mechanical. Counsel has seen the site plan proceed through city council previously, but it is a 6,602 square foot commercial building proposed to be located in Windsor Office Park. There are some renderings and site plans attached. This project had previously been proposed off of Northwest 88th Street due to some underlying easements. It's relocated this site. The proposed development agreement is for a base TIF agreement that is in the form of a forgivable loan this time due to the expiration of the urban renewal area in Windsor Office Park. So that would be a 50% forgivable loan based off of the incremental property tax generated by this project with 20% forgiven each year as long as they have made their property tax payments and invited by the terms of employment numbers per the agreement. The maximum amount of the forgivable loan is $154,639. And this is a relocation from the City of Urbandale to Johnston. Urbandale has provided the required sign-off for the relocation and the TIF assistance for the fair play agreement. Agreement's previously been reviewed by the Ad Hoc Economic Development Committee, and we haven't received any public comments as of this evening. Have to answer any questions or go into any additional detail.
Counsel, have any questions for Adams?
Adam, so Set Point is going in where the blue box is, and then where is 7G going?
There's a mute there. Impact 7, I believe their location is just to the south and the east there. Can't quite see the number from 8800, I believe it is, just to the right of that.
Okay, all right.
Sorry, did somebody have, was there a correction on that? Did I have the right ring address? Yeah, I said, Aaron Wolf, I said 8951. That's where Impact 7G will be going. 8951. Your numbers must be wrong on the
Got 289.
On the map, yeah. It's at the corner of 90th and
Oh, yeah. It's at the other corner.
To the left of that one, Cindy. Get that one there. Right where, yep.
Okay, yeah. Okay, perfect. So I was just trying to, I knew that we had two projects going in there. I was just trying to figure out where they are. So, thank you.
Impact has an entrance from both sides that's on the
Right, yep. But they both, they don't share the same street number, do they?
No, that's from the Polk County Assessors website. They must have it incorrectly added or addressed on the map.
Okay, all right. No big deal. Sorry.
Any other questions for Adam, counsel? If not, this is a public hearing. Do we have any members of the public that would like to address the counsel on this item? And if you do, please raise your electronic hand.
Seeing none.
We will close the public hearing then at 7:46. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number 21-98?
Move approval, Coe.
Second, Evans. We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Temple?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes. Motion passed. Item 4B, another public hearing on the matter of adoption plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the Johnston scatter phase two fiber project. Consider resolution number 21-101, adopting plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost. Consider the construction bids and consider resolution number 21-102, rejecting bids. And we'll open this public hearing at 7:47.
Good evening. This is Matt Greiner. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Wednesday, March 31st, the city received bids for the Johnston's Gator Phase Two Fiber Project. This project would run fiber up the Beaver Drive corridor from Merle Hay up toward our north city limits to connect our water booster stations as well as our sanitary sewer lift stations to have a more reliable connection. There were two bids that were received for the project. The engineer's opinion of probable cost was $412,010. The city did receive a low bid of $347,899. But after the engineer evaluated the bids after the letting, it was discovered that they did not acknowledge the addendum that was issued for the bid and subsequently used the incorrect bid proposal form, thus making both bidders non-responsive. We will like go back, revise the timeline, and rebid the project at a later date. At this point, staff and the engineer would recommend checking the bids for the project. Be happy to answer any questions.
Matt, how much delay are you thinking until you reissue the bids?
We'll have to go back and kind of look at the timeline. We would, we'll probably have to revise the completion date from this year probably to next year. Right now, getting fiber is about anywhere from four to six months out. But that doesn't mean that we can't go ahead and rebid it, have the contractor install the conduit and get everything ready, order the fiber, and then probably install it in the spring of 2022.
Was the addendum substantial cost?
It was another switch that was needed. So there were 30 bid items, and they each only bid 29. So after discussing it with Allers and Cooney's, Allers and Cooney that it was actually, they're considered non-responsive and should reject both bids and rebid it. It was not as significant, but it was an irregularity in the bid that should be rejected.
My only thing is if you turn around and put it out to bid again, you've got a substantial difference between the two bidders. That's a lot of information they can use. But then again, I'm not sure how they would use it. You know, one might drop its price and the other one might raise their price, but you really don't know. So.
Yeah, I would agree. We'll revise the timeline for completion and stretch it out a little bit. So that should help with the bids as well. So I would hope that the new bids would come in at a lower price if we can give them more time.
Sounds good. Any other questions, counsel? Do we have anyone from the public that would like to address the counsel on this item? If you would like to share your comments, please raise your little electronic hand.
Seeing none.
Okay. We close the public hearing then at 7:50. We have two resolutions before us for consideration. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number 21-101?
Motion.
Second, Martin. We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Ready?
Yes.
Temple?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. We also have resolution number 21-102. Do we have a motion? Martin, so move, Martin. Second, Evans. We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Temple?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the consent agenda. We did remove items P and Q, moving Q to the non-consent agenda and removing P altogether. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second, Evans. We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Temple?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the non-consent agenda. Item 7A, consider third reading and to adopt and publish ordinance number 1049, amending chapter 69 to modify parking prohibited for hazardous locations. Has there been any additional comment on this?
Sorry, this is my item. There has been no additional comments received or no changes to the language.
This is a third reading. Do we have a motion to approve third reading and to adopt and publish? So move, Martin. Second. We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Temple?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7B, consider third reading and to adopt and publish ordinance number 1050, amending chapter 62 to add engine brake section. And is this one yours as well?
Yes, it is. There again has been no changes to the language or comments received.
Counsel, have any questions? Any comments from the public?
Seeing none.
If not, then do we have a motion to approve third reading and to adopt and publish? So, second, Martin. Motion by Evans, second by Martin. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Temple?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes. Motion passed. Item 7C, consider third reading and adopting and publishing ordinance number 1048, an ordinance amending the Johnston revised ordinances of 2007, chapter 65, to modify the locations of stop intersections and yield intersections.
No changes since last reading.
Counsel, any questions? Is there any public comment?
Seeing none.
We have a motion to approve third reading and adopting and publishing ordinance number 1048.
I'm motion. I second, Rash.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Ready?
Yes.
Temple?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7D, consider resolution number 21-84, setting a date for a special election for the vacant city council seat. Would this be Cindy or Jim?
It'll be Jim, but he needs to use my microphone. We are just taking action on following the work session we had at our previous meeting. This will just notify the county officially that we intend to hold the election on
June 22nd.
June 22nd? Thank you. And that the candidacy period will open after the county has been notified. Candidacy paperwork is also available on the Secretary of State's website and will need to be turned into the Polk County Election Office prior to whatever days I have in there that I can't find at this moment. I think it's the 15th, but I can't. I'm pulling up the resolution so I can give you the right date.
I don't know that the resolution said what date the nomination petitions are due.
Oh, nope, those were in my other notes. Sorry, I thought it was in that staff report, but it clearly was not.
Hey, Cindy?
Yes.
I just went back and looked at the work session from last meeting. It looks like it was April 30th. Nomination papers are due on April 30th.
Yep, that's correct.
Primary date would be May 25th and then Wednesday.
Yep, I have that pulled up now too, Councilmember Coe. Thank you, yes. Nomination papers due prior to 5:00 PM on April 30th. Primary, if necessary, will be held on May 25th.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Cindy on this item? Does any member of the public want to comment?
Seeing none.
Okay. If not, then do we have a motion to approve resolution number 21-84?
Move approval, Coe.
Second, Martin. We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Temple?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7E, consider resolution number 21-88, authorizing the police chief to sign a renewal MOU with Polk County area law enforcement executives regarding responses to motor vehicle pursuits. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor. Counsel, this is Chief Mechanial. This would normally probably be a consent agenda item, but I wanted to give a little context very briefly to you all. In 2013, the Metro Police Chiefs Group passed a memorandum of understanding for multi-jurisdictional cooperation involving motor vehicle pursuits. It's been nearly 10 years since that original agreement was put in place. There's been a great deal of transition in each of our agency's policies and legal standards. So this was an effort just to update the original agreement to make certain that we're working together in that multi-jurisdictional capacity when we have these situations. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer that. In addition to the MOU, you've also got a copy of our specific Johnston Police Department pursuit policy that was attached to the agenda.
Counsel, have any questions for the chief?
I just have a comment, chief. I want to say that I appreciated the memo that you included about the policy and procedure for pursuits. That was extremely informative, and I am a novice. You know, this is not my background, but I would have to say it answered every question I had about pursuit and when you would undertake a pursuit. And I, to my eyes, looked very comprehensive and frankly, safe. So thank you for that.
Absolutely appreciate the comments.
Any other comments or questions from the counsel?
Chief, are there any sort of changes that are what you would consider significant from the 2013 policy to this policy? The gist of the 2013 effort is really if you rewind time about a decade, there was a great deal of inconsistency between the metro agencies with their pursuit policies. So the information that was stripped out from the old agreement to the new agreement is now appropriately placed in the pursuit policies of each agency. The challenge we had in 2013 was there are a lot of different viewpoints and what should involve a pursuit. So we had to come to some baseline generalities of the minimum standards that would be included within a pursuit. Those are now all best practices, and we've done a complete review in the chief's group of all the pursuit policies to make sure those are in each local policy. So this is really getting more back to the basics of what an MOU should be. It's that policy agreement between agencies for cooperation as opposed to the operational standards that would be in pursuits themselves and management. Great, thank you.
Other questions for the chief? If not, do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on this item?
Seeing none.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number 21-88? Move, Evans.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Yes.
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 Motion passed.
I guess that was what you were saying. Yeah, right. I did process of elimination.
What happened?
They just couldn't hear John, or John's name.
We couldn't hear Cindy. She's at the bottom of the floor now.
Yeah, we couldn't hear Cindy.
We're learning to roll with the punches here.
Yes, yes.
You guys are doing a great job.
Now you're back, Cindy. There we go.
Moving on to item 7F, consider resolution number 21-100, a resolution naming a representative and alternate to the Bravo grade of the Mullen Board.
This is a naming representative to the Bravo Board to take over for Scott Stroick as from when he left the city council. Tom Coe serves as our alternate. And so what this does, it moves Tom into the primary representative. And at the time, and I did send an email out to counsel last week to see if there was anybody that wanted to plied to be the alternate representative. So that's why I put it on the non-consent agenda to see if anybody was interested in being put on as the alternate. The Bravo Board meets quarterly. Their next meeting is in June, and then it'll be three months after that. So they don't meet very often, but it's an important board for our community. And so I just wanted to make sure if there was anybody that wanted to serve as the alternate, that they'd have the opportunity to be put on the resolution.
Does anyone have an interest in being named as the alternate?
Jim, this is Rash. I probably could, but I need a little bit more details than that. So can we talk offline on this?
Yes, we can talk offline. Yeah.
Okay.
So I'll give you a call tomorrow and we could talk about that.
All right, thank you, Jim. Appreciate it.
So in the meantime, Kim, I would suggest that we go ahead and pass the resolution with Councilmember Coe as the primary so that we can get that turned into them and then we can come back with an update if Councilmember Ready decides he wants to be the alternate.
Any other questions or comments for Jim? Do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on this?
Seeing none.
Jim, I noticed that we're looking at your, I think your office and your chair. Are you under your desk?
Well, just to go along with what's happening tonight, my microphone's not working, so I'm using the microphone right now.
Okay, well, I just check in on you there. Okay, so we have a, do we have a motion and a second?
Not yet.
Okay.
No.
Do we have a motion to approve resolution number 21-100?
So move, Temple. Second, Temple.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Martin?
Do we have a motion to approve resolution number 21-100?
Some move.
Move Temple, second Temple.
A motion in a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Temple?
Yes.
Coop?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. See, that's why we're doing these well checks, just to make sure. We already heard from Adam, he's not well, so this is a good thing. Okay, moving on to 7G. Consider resolution number 21-96. A res- a resolution approving the preliminary plat for Johnson Wildlife Estates outside city limits, subject to the standards and conditions applied to plats within the city of Johnston. The subject property is located at 11052 Northwest Row Drive, PZK's 21-01.
This is Aaron Wolf with Community Development. And the preliminary plat for Johnson Wildlife Estates depicts a subdivision of 21.4 acres into two lots for single-family homes and two unbuildable lots, outlots, excuse me. And it's on property outside of city limits. And I saw Cindy was trying to open up the vicinity map there, but it must not be opening. Well, when she pulls that up, then you can get a better idea of where this is at. There we go. It's, as you can see, it's east of Highway 141 and north of the golf course property that's in the Blue Cross Hatch there along Beaver Creek. And again, that Blue Cross Hatch area represents 21.4 acres. And it's outside city limits, being proposed to be subdivided into two lots for single-family homes and two outlots. And while it is not in city limits, it is within our two-mile extraterritorial review territory. Cindy, if you would, go ahead and open up the preliminary plat. Therefore, because it's in our extraterritorial review territory, the city has the right to enforce our subdivision ordinance requirements in the same way that we would if the property were inside city limits. For this property, our comprehensive plan does show a very small portion of the property in the northwest corner as the, as the employment land use category. However, approximately 95% of the property is depicted as parks and open space. And Cindy, you could go down just a little bit to bring that, maybe go down to the next drawing. I think it illustrates the subdivision a little more clearly. Page three of four. Let's go to four of four. Okay, there we go there. As you can see, it's at the southeast corner of the intersection of Northwest Row Drive and Northwest, that's four. Northwest Row Drive currently is a rural section roadway with no sidewalk or trail. And for that reason, staff recommends deferral of sidewalk until otherwise directed by the city council. And with regard to utilities, the city of Johnston previously approved this property for service by Xenia Rural Water District. Sanitary sewer is not available to serve these properties. Therefore, new homes will be serviced by individual septic systems. However, we have made provisions to obtain easements through the plat for future extension of public sanitary sewer that would serve our northern growth area. And chapter 180 of our code ordinances requires dedication of five acres of public parkland for every 1,000 residents added to the community. And the applicant proposes for these two homes, cash in lieu of parkland, and that requirement would be addressed when the city council considers approval of the final plat in the future. So again, this is kind of a procedural thing. We're making more or less a recommendation to the county. But again, because it's in our review area, we're allowed to exercise our subdivision requirements on this property. And so you'll see we have a number of typical conditions for approval that you would see on the, on the plat. If you have any questions for me, I can answer those now.
Council, have any questions for Aaron?
Yeah, I have one, Aaron. It's Johnson Temple. Is this, did this potentially create an island as we proceed with the annexation in the northwest area?
It's, it's currently an existing island. And if, while state law prohibits creation of an island, you can reduce the size of existing islands. So I think property to the north of this and to the south of this are currently in city limits. This is a, over to Highway 141. And then including this area is a little small pocket of area that's in unincorporated Polk County. So it won't be, again, it's, it's not, we're not annexing this in at this time. But it, it is currently an island. If we were to annex this property in, it would make, reduce the size of the island.
Well, is it something we should consider an annexation agreement? Or do we have the power to do that?
We would have the power to require an annexation agreement, like an irrevocable annexation agreement that says at the time of city choosing, we would annex into the city limits.
This, this is Dave Warding, just to clarify, this isn't technically an island. The area, the property to the west is not in the city limits. And with the right of way, we're, there's not a lot of growth potential immediately to the west. So we're pretty comfortable that we're not going to get into an island situation here.
Okay, so as long as it doesn't impede us, and that's the important thing. So is my understanding that correct?
Yeah, it's, it shouldn't. We're, we've got growth to the north, or we're annexed to the north and to the south. And we've, just because of the way Beaver Creek, you can see on the aerial map there, there's very limited development potential along the west side of 141. So we have a natural sort of out to prevent a formal island.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, council? Is there any member of the public that would like to make comments? If not, do we have a motion to approve resolution number 21-96?
Move approval, Coop.
Second, Evans.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember ready?
Yes.
Yes.
Coop?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 78, consider change orders number 41 and 42 with Hanson JTC LLC for the Johnston Town Center project.
Hi, this is Dave Warding. Again, change order 41 is a pretty simple one. Pretty much all the office lights in the building have the ability to dim, except for the two admin offices up front, the reception desk. And those are quite bright. So the staff has asked that we could get dimmers added to those. Unfortunately, it's not just as simple as replacing the switches. And it does need to be a little bit of rewiring done. So that has a cost there of $1,197. Change order 42, if Adam is on, I will defer to him. This is regarding the cost for the mural on the site support building.
Yes, I'm here, David. So the Johnston Arts Council has been working through a request for qualifications for the mural in the concessions building. That's the two-sided mural that faces north and then to the west. We had a number of respondents back to that RFQ through internal review process to recommend selection of James Navarro and his partner Kate Jensen to complete the project. Their bid was for $9,150, which is a little less than previously discussed for the price range of this mural. So we're still working through some potential ideas and concepts for what would be included on that mural. And the Arts Council's given them kind of a thought bubble of some Johnston themes, and are intending to sit back down with him and, and talk through those in a little bit more detail. But he has done a number of nice projects in Iowa. I believe there's a number of samples attached here as well, under the mural themes attachment. But the, the request council is to move forward with the contract with James Navarro and have him complete that work this summer. And hopefully have a little bit of an interactive completion of that mural at the Johnston Town Center opening, hopefully in July.
Does the council have any questions for Adam or for Dave?
Dave, this is Suresh. The dimmer light, you say, because the lights are too bright. Can we just replace the lights?
Well, they're all LED lights, so this'll, this will use the light fixtures that we have. It'll just take some reworking to allow them to be adjusted. So the staff will have the ability to adjust them.
Other questions for Dave or Adam? Is there anyone in the public that would like to address the council on this item? If not, do we have a motion to approve change orders number 41 and 42 with Hanson JTC LLC?
Move approval, Coop.
Second, Martin.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, roll call, please.
Councilmember Temple?
Yes.
Coop?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready? Ready? Councilmember ready? Or maybe?
Sorry, I lost my internet.
Suresh has lost his internet.
Ooh.
So, for.
They're both bad. Oh, I know. My son's like, come on, man. I turn that, when Metro that comes, we get five of the house.
Cindy, are we, is he getting back on?
He's working on it. We'll just record this vote as 4-0, and we'll hopefully pick him up on the next item.
We have a majority, so.
Yep.
I'm sorry, guys, I'm back.
Yeah, there he is.
Okay, Suresh, yes, on change, yes or no on change orders?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion passed. Moving on to item 7I. Consider approval of the following items related to development property at 5401 Northwest Beaver Drive. Resolution 21-94, approving the site plans for, for a 29,275 square foot warehouse and office building. Resolution 21-95, approving a stormwater facilities maintenance agreement.
Aaron Wolf, Community Development, again. Underground Magnetics has submitted site plans for a 29,275 square foot warehouse and office building on Lot 6 of Northwest Beaver Office Park. And that lot is shown there on the vicinity map in blue. There is a building that was constructed to the west of this property within the last, I want to say, two years. And these two properties will share an access. You can see just opposite of Johnston Drive there, there's a paved access to enter into the site. That will be extended further east to access the subject property. And Cindy, if you want to go ahead and pull up the site plans, we'll look at page four of the site plans. I'll start out by talking about parking. There are 63 total spark parking spaces required. And at this time, the applicant proposes to install 29 of those parking spaces at the time that they, they construct the building. They are seeking council deferral of the additional parking spaces until later date. The reason they're asking this is because at this time, that they're actually overbuilding the building. They're, they're not fully staffed at this point, so they don't have need for all of that parking. And they want to add the additional parking at the future phase. When that future phase is complete, it will consist of 90 additional future parking spaces. When those are installed, it will actually exceed the required amount. So there are 63 are required. They're proposing 29 today, seeking council deferral of the rest. When all is said and done, they'll, they'll have, they'll exceed the 63 that are required. The preliminary and final plats that created this lot included city council deferral sidewalks along the Northwest Beaver Drive front of and the subject property doesn't front any public street. And therefore, there's no pedestrian connection, as there's no sidewalk on Northwest Beaver Drive. For this property, there is sidewalk that circles around the building. And there will be sidewalk that actually connects and runs around that pond as well. There will be three new hydrants that are installed internal to the site by building coverage, and the building will be sprinkled with fire protection. And the majority of stormwater runoff from this site typically flows, will flow to the drainage well on the west side of the subject property. It's probably just at the bottom of the screen, probably, if we can page down just a little bit or make that view smaller. There, okay. This isn't, this doesn't, this page doesn't show the grading, but there is a drainage swell that is just north of this access drive. And that drainage swell will drain to the pond that you see there in the bottom right corner of your screen. There, the building elevation, Cindy, if you can pull those up. They indicate use of precast concrete and stone panels over 100% of the building area. And that, that does meet our architectural requirements for the industrial district. Industrial properties are required to retain 20% of their property as open space. Or in this case, it would be approximately 80,000 square feet that full build out, including all of those parking spaces, the future parking spaces that I mentioned. This site exhibits 297,000-plus square feet of open space. So that would meet the, the open space requirements. And Cindy did just pull up those elevations. Again, if they're indicating the use of precast concrete and stone panels, and those do, do meet our architectural requirements. Back to the open space, there are, they do meet the open space requirements. They're also required to install 53 trees and 80 shrubs. Their site plan is compliant with 47 new trees. They're going to take an additional 99 trees that are already on the site and relocate them around the site. And they intend to install 87 shrubs, so they will exceed the, the open space planning requirement. Now, we did receive public comment from the south adjacent property of Randy Crowe. And Mr. Crowe expressed some concerns regarding drainage, stating that previous grading activities on this site that occurred during grading of the subdivision have, have impacted his site. He stated that grading of the subdivision removed an existing swell that channeled water east and west at this southernmost property line. And the planning commission asked city staff to direct our consulting engineer to look into the issue and to incorporate any findings into our recommendation to the council. And we did have our consulting engineer revisit the issue, and they reported that after they looked at aerials, then the existing swell that served to contain water before it entered the Crowe property was previously eliminated with grading of the subdivision. And they recommended that swell be restored to ensure that during small rain events, that the rain coming off of that property, off of that undetained area at the southeast corner of the site, that it would run to that swell rather than run onto Mr. Crowe's property. And I've actually incorporated an additional condition of approval to that effect that I sent out in a revised resolution this afternoon. I've just added one additional condition at the bottom, referring to folks' review of the matter. And I dated the, and the letter dated today's date and asked if they revised the site plans to, to provide a swell there at the south property line. I'm asking you to consider two resolutions tonight. 2194 approves the site plans for 5401 Northwest Beaver Drive. And resolution 2195 approves a stormwater management maintenance agreement for the basin that's on the property. If you have any questions for me, I can answer those now. Otherwise, we have Wally Pelz, Pelz Engineering here with us as well.
Does the council have any questions for Aaron or for the? I'm sorry, what was, what was his name, Aaron?
Oh, Wally Pelz, Pelz Engineering.
Or for Wally?
I have a question, Mayor.
Okay.
Aaron, can you tell me more about the plans for the, these 90-some trees that they're tree spading into a area of the site? Are they can, going Are they can, going to be selling those trees later? Or is that their permanent home? Is that a development, is that a lot that's going to be developed at a later time?
I believe it's their permanent home, but I would defer to the, the applicant or their representative.
Yeah, good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, Wally Pelz with Pelz Design Services, twenty-three twenty-three Dixon Street, Des Moines, Iowa, five oh three sixteen. The purpose of moving those trees is currently, they would be where we're proposing that detention facility. And our client would like to save those. There's a, there's just a whole bunch of trees there right now that were part of the Caldenberg Tree Farm that they would hate to lose, so they're proposing to relocate them to the location to the south. Instead of just tearing them out and knocking them over.
Do they see this as a permanent installation?
It is my understanding, yes, unless their business booms even more, where we have looked to expand to the south, but we would like to keep as many trees as possible.
And again, to reiterate, the, the open space landscaping requirement requires fifty-three trees. They're actually installing forty-seven new trees. So they're only six trees off of meeting the requirement without those ninety relocated trees. So, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, I understand, but that was my, part of my question on if they were permanent. Aaron, I have a question for you. When they do build in the proposed future paving, for example, if some of the trees that are planned for the installation for the new building, if at that time when the additional parking is put in, does the city get to look at the landscaping again? I guess my, I'm going around the question. The question is, do we get another review? Is there, is there a point when we can review the landscaping to see if it's still alive and still meets the the requirements of the development? Do you understand what I'm saying? If some of this stuff died off, and then they came back and said, we're, we're ready to put in our parking, and we said, well, you know, it was bad here, and half the landscaping is gone. Do we have the ability to ask them to fulfill the required landscape?
On something like this, with the, when they're adding that additional parking, staff would probably review that administratively. Just because you've already seen it, you, you know, you, you see what they would like to do in the future. It's, it's a minor, a minor thing to add that additional pavement. It's already been taken into account with their stormwater requirements. They're already building that basin to accommodate those additional parking stalls, so staff would just review that and approve it administratively. They are required by code to maintain their plantings in perpetuity. Typically, that's enforced on a complaint basis, or, you know, as we see it, if we drive by a site and we notice that landscaping has died off, we would require that, you know, ask that they replace it, but it's typically on a, on a complaint basis.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Aaron. I'm trying to look for the elevations to see about floodplain. I, I know in the staff report it mentions, talks a little bit about the floodplain. Are we anywhere near a hundred-year floodplain line? Or, or five hundred year or anything like that? I couldn't see that in any of the elevations.
Right, the, the, slate's been amended. Some fill was added. The property was brought, where the building area has been brought up outside, out of floodplain. And so.
Aaron, I can answer that question. We're a little over five point some feet above the hundred year right now.
And does that include the stormwater detention to the north?
Yep, stormwater detention has, we have to, as a part of the permit that we got to fill in this area, we had to also maintain off, what's known as an offset volume. So that detention basin contemplates all of that. So not only do we get our stormwater quality and quantity, but we also contain additional flood volumes that contemplate, that's contemplated in that pond.
So that, like, at the lowest level of that stormwater, and it's like seven ninety-two or something like that?
Yeah, that's actually a wet bottom, so that would be the bottom. Pool level's around eight hundred. Flood event at a hundred years, eight oh five. And our finished floor right now is at eight ten point five, so we're five and a half feet above that.
Okay, so the, the hundred-year floodplain is at eight oh five, is that what you said?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Are there questions for Aaron or Wally? Is there any member of the public that is with us this evening that would like to make comments on this item?
And before a motion is made, I do want to just again clarify that the resolution that was included with the staff report has been amended to add an additional condition, and that went out to all the council members earlier today. Cindy, I don't know if you have access to that, pull it up. I included you on an email. But if, if we're not able to pull that up, I would just suggest that whoever makes that motion add, recommend approval subject to an additional condition that, there you go. Cindy's able to pull it up here. Nope, that's the wrong one. There.
There I am.
Revised resolution. And this adds additional numbered item, I believe it's number seven at the bottom. Proposed grading shall be revised along the southern property line of fifty-four oh one Northwest Beaver to re-institute a shallow drainage swell to ensure small rain events do not directly drain on the granular parking lot of fifty-two eighty-nine Northwest Beaver Drive as detailed in the letter provided by both Infrastructure and Environment dated April five, twenty twenty-one. And again, that was in response to the adjacent neighbors' concerns and folks reviewing the situation.
Aaron, unless that came out after five today, I did not get your email or I missed it. Can, can you make sure I'm on your distribution list?
Absolutely.
I don't recall if I asked if there was any member of the public that would like to make comments on this, but I'll do that.
I see none.
Okay. If there are no further comments or questions, do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty-one dash ninety-four as it's been amended and presented to you this evening?
Move approval, Co.
Second, Suresh.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Co?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Temple?
Yes.
Motion passed. Do we have a motion to approve resolution? Do we have a motion to approve, approve our resolution number twenty-one dash ninety-five?
I'm Suresh.
Second, Temple.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Temple?
Yes.
Co?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item seven J, consider approval of resolution number twenty-one dash ninety-seven. A resolution approving the site plan for Johnson Crossing multi-family at fifty-four oh nine Northwest, Northwest Johnson Drive, PZK's twenty-one dash zero two.
Hey, this is Aaron Wolf again. It's like Cindy's getting a start on the vicinity map. The site plans for Johnson Crossing depict a three-story, fifty-unit, income-restricted, multi-family housing project for persons over fifty years of age. And the property is located at fifty-four oh nine Northwest Johnston Drive. There we go, Cindy bringing it in the, in the view. As you can see, it's on the north side of Northwest Johnston Drive and just west of the Tressel, Tressel Trail. And Cindy, if you would, maybe go to the site plans and pull up page three. This property was rezoned in twenty twenty from M to General Industrial Zoning District to Mixed Use Center. And the Mixed Use Center does allow multi-family housing at densities of twenty-five units per acre. And the density of this proposed project is twenty-one point five units per acre. And I'm thinking maybe page three of these site plans might be, yeah, there we go, that's good. With regard to sidewalk, there's currently no sidewalk along Northwest Johnson Drive. But the developer will be responsible for constructing a ten-foot-wide public trail from the interurban trail to a point that is approximately halfway to the Merle Hay Road intersection. And the remainder of the trail would be constructed by the city as part of a future road improvements project to Johnston Drive. And that road improvements project would improve the roadway from west of this property up to and including the intersection of Merle Hay Road. So again, we'll eventually have a ten-foot trail from Tressel, Tressel Trail all the way to Merle Hay Road. The developer's portion is approximately half of that distance. The city will pay the rest. The parking requirement for multi-family housing is two parking spaces for each unit and one additional space for every ten dwelling units to account for visitors or overcoat. And for the subject site, this would pencil out one hundred and five required spaces. But the count, the applicant will seek the council approval of the site plan with seventy-four parking stalls and lieu of one hundred and five. In recognition that the apartments are one-bedroom units, and they're limited to seniors who tend to, or be able to make fewer daily trips. The council does have the authority to waive or modify the parking requirements of city code, and you've previously, previously done so on senior housing projects. And for that reason, staff recommends council approval of such a way. This site generally drains from the west to the east. Stormwater for the site will be accommodated by three interconnected ride-bottom detention basins that are on the south and east edges of the site. And these base basins outlet southwest with existing oval and barge channel along the north side of Johnston Drive. So they'll, they'll, they'll flow to the open ditches on the north side of Johnston Drive. Residential districts are required to designate thirty percent of the total lot area to open space, and the site is compliant with forty-five percent open space. In addition, the open space landscaping requirement mandates sixteen trees and twenty-four shrubs. This site plan depicts only twelve open space trees in lieu of sixteen, and therefore, staff recommends a condition of approval to revise the site plans to add four additional trees. Buffers are required between contrasting zoning districts, and in the case of this property, each adjacent property does have a different zoning classification, therefore, buffers are required along each property line. And those are shown on sheet L one point O, I believe Cindy's already there. And those buffers are in compliance with our buffer requirements. New residential developments, we talked earlier about that minor subdivision. We discussed parkland dedication requirement. It's the same for, for similar formula for multi-family projects. In this instance, they're required to dedicate five acres of public parkland for every one thousand residents added to the community. And when the property was planted, point five-six acres was dedicated in City of Johnston for the purposes of satisfying that parkland dedication requirement. And you can see that in the southeast corner, there's a wedge, there, high-shaped wedge that was dedicated to the City of Johnston when the lot was planted. And the city currently has the ground earmarked for future development of a dog park, a public dog park. Cindy, if you could go to the building elevations, the new, new attachment there. I'd say, yeah, Johnson Crossing Architecture. And the architectural requirements for multi-family buildings in our code stipulate that building design be compatible with residential uses in the vicinity in a attempt, in attempt to lessen plainness of appearance. You know, we don't just want a box adjacent to the roadway. Building materials for the subject property include brick and horizontal lap siding, which of course are common residential building materials in the area. And the roof is a hip-style roof, which is also common in residential construction. I do want to note that resolution twenty-one dash ninety-seven includes a condition of approval at seven dot G to update the architectural elevations to create a more definite and distinguished main entrance to the building. And the applicant actually went back to the drawing board, and they provided some additional, yep, there we go, we're at seven G, which says, update your architectural plans to vary the building materials around the main entrance of the building such that the entrance may be distinguished as the main entrance to the building. And Cindy, if you would go back to the attachments, the architect's gone back to the drawing board and maybe opened up about B with three. And what they've done to try to draw more attention to the entrance as a focal point is add two brick columns on either side, and they've installed a small hip roof over that to distinguish that as, as the building entrance. And so they technically, in my opinion, they've satisfied that requirement, but certainly that could be up for discussion with the council here tonight. That's all I have. If anybody has any questions for me, I can answer those now, otherwise, we do have representatives for the project with us. I believe Barry Accountis is with us tonight in the audience with Woda Cooper, if you should have any questions for him.
Does the council have any questions for Aaron or for the developer?
Aaron, I do have some questions. I guess I'll start with the, what you just ended up with was talking about the exterior of the building. If you look on site plan page C two point zero, are there air conditioning units spaced in front of the building? That what I'm seeing on the plan? Right there, or that one would work too. You zoom in. Are those air conditioning units shown in front of the building?
No, I'm actually covering for Clayton tonight, so I'm going to pump that one over to Barry if he's with us. Barry, are you, have you joined us tonight?
I have, and thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. My name's Barry Accountis with Woda Cooper Companies. My home address is four five nine Meek Road in Pataskala. And yes, ma'am, those are outdoor condensing units for the central air conditioning that each apartment will have to control on their own.
I don't, I know that we probably, we don't have an ordinance that says, says those need to be screened, but when you're going to go to all that effort of working on that main door with the brick columns, et cetera, I would hope that perhaps in your landscape plans, you might consider screening those air conditioning units also. Okay, so I have another question. I see that, and I will stop here and say, the survey of the trees of the existing site was very detailed, and I really appreciate that. Whoever did your civil work, reach out and tell them excellent work. I'm kind of in the field, and I, and I appreciated that very much. There's only one sidewalk to the surrounding trail, the trail that's going along Northwest Johnston Drive. But the parking lot to the east is quite close to where the Johnston Trail or where the inner trail is located. Was there any conversation about providing a path for your residents to get to the trail to the east more direct?
Quite frankly, no, ma'am. We haven't had that discussion. If it, if it pleases the city council, we would certainly consider it.
You might, you might consider that. I think that your, your, one of the attraction for the people living here will be our fabulous trails, and I can see them trying to shortcut that anyway, and they're going to be older citizens, so you might want to think about providing them an access.
Yes, ma'am, and ironically, we're putting in half the trail along our southern edge, so yes, more access we could provide for that amenity. I agree.
It seems to me that I read in some of the paperwork, there was discussion about a potential flat area for future amenities, but in looking at the plans, I couldn't figure out where that area could be. Did I misread that? Or is there a potential for, oh, I don't know, a seating area, a gazebo, or something for the residents?
Yes, ma'am, we did have that discussion. I'm not sure why it's not on the site plan. Things have been moving a little quickly. Yes, we, we would like to put a, a Yes, we would like to put a gazebo somewhere on a flat green space that would work well with the building and the amenities. Probably not closer to the road, probably in the rear. But yes, we've considered that. And again, I don't know why it's not on the plan.
And I appreciate that things have been moving fast.
That did get covered on the resolution. It looks like it's, gosh, now I lost it. It's Clayton did include a condition on there. It says, identify an area, it's number F, seven F, identify an area of open space, which is generally flat and dry and of sufficient size for resident recreation. Additional amenities within the space may be added at a future date. And what he's referring to there, of course, it's not a code requirement, but we do have a multifamily housing study that suggests we try to incorporate more areas for recreation when it comes to multifamily housing units. So he did try to get that covered under section up there. And I believe there, when they come back with revisions, they'll have a spot on there for something like, say, a bocce ball court or perhaps a gardening area for the residents.
I, I appreciate that information. And my last item is the notes about trying to save some trees. And this is very near and dear to my heart, and I totally like the way it was written in there that there are three trees that will try to be saved if an arborist says they cannot be moved successfully, then it will not be a requirement. My hope is down the road when we get, when we start doing some, perhaps rework on some of our ordinances, that we can even give you credit for saving trees or moving trees that are on, on site. And I also noticed that there's a tree on the north property line, a maple tree that has been highlighted as one to try and save. And for the same reason, I would like, you know, we're requesting that you plant an additional four trees to make, to meet our requirements, but I would love to see that maple tree preserved too. And I'm not exactly sure if it's in the, in the notes as being a required safe. Can you address that, Erin, for us?
Yeah, it looks like Clayton did in the resolution for approval. I just saw that he made mention of that maple tree. It's item seven C, or excuse me, seven E. Update the landscaping plan to identify the maple tree along the north property boundary to be preserved. Is that what you're referring to?
Okay, so it's in there and it's part of the requirements of the
Of the resolution, yes.
Great. And I would recommend that they show, you know, some tree protection fencing on the, I'd add that to the resolution and have tree protection fencing called out on the plans along with the tree. I mean, you've got to have both. You've got to have the tree protected and you got to say it's on the plans or else they won't get protected. But again, I will just finally just say, I appreciated all the work that went into the landscaping, the site survey, landscaping plans, the selection of plan material was all very well done. Thank you.
And we absolutely agree with your thoughts there, Councilman. We, we don't want to cut a tree down if we don't have to whatsoever. We like trees. They make the improvement even that much nicer. But yes, we'll absolutely save the tree to the north. The trees, the three to the west or east are going to be a little tougher, and we're going to have to explore our options on, on transplanting. But yes, tree protection will definitely be in our plans. You get contractors that get a little over zealous, and we will not have that. So there will be absolute tree protection when the crews start.
Thank you.
Other council comments, questions?
I just have a real quick question for Barry. So as I understand, is this project, are you seeking tax credits from the Iowa Finance Authority as part of this project? Is that correct?
Yes, it's correct to the point that we've been awarded the credits and financing's been committed.
Okay, so you have been awarded. Okay, great. I just wasn't sure what the status of that. Thank you very much for, for letting me know. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, John Temple speaking. Erin, the lap siding, I know this is residential and not commercial, but what's the material that the lap siding is comprised of?
I can answer that. It's fiber cement siding with brick accents. It's actually an Iowa requirement with the Finance Authority.
Okay, so it's basically hardy plank type thing?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then the second comment, Erin, is that I didn't see the the usual note I asked for on the no parking signage on the handicap aisle loading zones.
You know, I looked at the site plans before. It looks like Clayton had it. I think Cindy had her cursor on it. No, that's not it. But when I looked at the site plans, I thought they were labeled.
I couldn't find it, but it was pretty fine for him.
Yeah, Cindy, if you could, it's not on, yeah. Yeah, just a minute. I need to find it myself. Bear with me.
Also, Mayor, there's another member of the audience with their hand up as well.
John, for the sake of time, I think it's on there, but we, I would suggest that whoever make the motion to approve that we just add that as a condition so that we make sure we get them on there. But I do think they are on there. It's not this page here. But I don't want to hold up a meeting looking for them.
Yeah, that's fine. We can just add a condition, condition. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you.
Are there any other council comments or questions? If not, Cindy, could you identify who the public member is that would like to attend, would like to comment?
Yes, Brent Jackman.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Brent Jackman, Hall and Hall Engineers, fifty ninety Northridge Point, Cedar Rapids. I think Barry did a great job. I'm the civil engineer on the project, so I just wanted to announce myself and let you know if there's any additional questions that may come up that Barry hasn't already answered. I'd be happy to answer them and go from there.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments, Council?
Barry, I do want to say I do appreciate the extra effort that has gone into the entrance feature. I mentioned that at a meeting that we had last week or so, and I think you've addressed that nicely. And Erin, thanks for including that as a condition. I do agree with Councilwoman Martin about the air conditioning units. There's something that could be done to hide those, whether it's with tall grasses or something. I think that would certainly improve the appearance of the outside of the building as well, so.
Yes, ma'am. I don't have the detail in front of me, but I'm certain we are screening those. We're spending way too much money on the improvement to clutter it up with air conditioning units.
Thank you. That's music to my ears. Okay, if there aren't any other comments or questions, do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty-one dash ninety-seven? And I guess I would suggest that Councilman Temple make the motion because he, he has a suggestion for an amendment to the motion.
Sure, I'll move approval. Yes, I'll move approval with the addition of a condition that handicap loading zone aisles will be signed as no parking. Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Temple?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes. Motion passed. Item seven K, consider professional services contract with Johnson Consulting.
This is Adam again. The city of Johnston's intending to go in front of the Iowa DOT for a RISE grant application in May related to the Ignite Project and the reconstruction of Merle Hay Road and Johnston Drive. Over the last couple of months, as we've been submitting documents to the Iowa DOT, they have asked for some additional both engineering and economic impact analysis. They do take a very scrupulous look at tourism grants in particular with some metrics that they have kind of generally looking for over a hundred thousand in out-of-state visitors coming for these types of projects. And so we've kind of been scrambling here in the last week to build on the existing information that we've given them from Catch Des Moines and from Ignite. We've connected with Johnston Consulting out of Chicago who's done a couple of Iowa Reinvestment District application economic impact analysis here in the metro as well as the water trails. So they have some familiarity with the Iowa processes. And they've sat in one of our DOT meetings. It's proposed that they would complete an up to twenty-four thousand dollar economic impact analysis as part of our application to the Iowa DOT for that three million dollar RISE grant. If, if our reinvestment district grant, which is a separate grant, is also successful and advancing in that process, this study would build in addition to an economic impact analysis for the rest of the gateway area as part of that grant application as well. So there is some potential dual usage of this impact analysis that we're conducting. But at this point, we feel that we need to move forward with this impact analysis with DOT RISE grants to strengthen our likelihood of getting DOT RISE grant funding. So that's what in front of, that's what in front of you this evening. Their intent is to wrap up the impact analysis by the end of next week for DOT's request, and we would have everything submitted by early next week. Happy to answer any questions.
Council have any questions for Adam? Is there any member of the public that would like to comment on this item?
I see none.
Do we have a motion to approve professional services contract with Johnson Consulting? You have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember, ready?
Yes.
Temple?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes. Motion passed. The next item is just a discussion item, correct, Jim?
Yes.
Looking for feedback on the Central Iowa Water Trails Project twenty-eight E agreement and proposed governance structure.
Yes, I, if you recall, the Central Iowa Waters Trails Group came to a council meeting a couple of meetings ago and talked about the Central Iowa Water Trails Project. They presented a twenty-eight E agreement, which I provide the council a copy for this meeting and then also the bylaws for the organization and really what they're looking for. They want feedback from all the communities that they're asking to participate. I normally would put this on the work session. The work session was pretty full today, and they wanted feedback by March thirty-first. And I let them know that we weren't meeting till April fifth. So, so I just put it on the agenda just as a reminder to the council of what the twenty-eight E talked about. And if you remember, it was basically dealing with the maintenance and the operation of the Central Iowa Water Trails Incorporated. And then the twenty-eight E, which is, excuse me, the bylaws, they were particularly interested in if the council had any thoughts on the section that relates to the board composition. And if you recall, they, they talked a lot about the board composition. They were trying to get as inclusive as possible with all the communities that are being asked to participate. And so they have most of the communities represented by an elected official. There's twenty-six people on the board. And then also some representatives from the counties that are involved and, and others. But so the purpose this, this evening is just to see if there's any feedback on the twenty-eight E agreement and the bylaws. And I would, what will happen is if there is some feedback, I would provide that to them. They're asking for feedback from all the communities right now. And with that feedback, they will do a final version of the twenty-eight E agreement, and they'll bring it back to the cities for consideration. So again, not an action item this evening, but I was just curious if council members had any questions or feedback related to those two documents.
So what?
Go ahead.
What, so the number, we had the section up there before, some of them moved it. Okay, so so there's eleven, how many local government representatives would be on the board?
So there'd be eleven local government representatives and then three county representatives.
So fourteen total local government reps and then seven private sector?
Correct.
Yeah, I'm fine. I don't have a problem with that. That seems fine to me.
The justification for part of that is that seventy percent of the funding would be coming from the local jurisdictions and sent from the private industry. So it loosely reflects that, that ratio.
Yeah, I'm good with, I don't know. I'm fine with that.
Was there, Jim, wasn't there something to the effect that the city of Des Moines wanted more representation on the leadership and I think there's two, there's two committee forums. Is that correct?
Yes.
Where, where, where is that in terms of going right now? Is that something also we should be commenting on?
Well, so this is the agreement that's gone out to all the communities, and we know what they're going to get from Des Moines is that they would like to have an additional representative. So that hasn't been put into this agreement yet, but we know that's going to be some feedback from some preliminary conversation with Des Moines. So, but so if that is accepted by the group, then that would be in the final twenty-eight E that would be brought back to the council for consideration.
Okay. Councilwoman Martin, I think there needs to be a little discussion of that because, yes, we can anticipate that Des Moines will come back and say, we want two members, we want two seats at the table for the board members. And then they've also proposed having a guaranteed seat on the executive council. It is, both of those issues are a little contentious, and some communities are resisting what, what Des Moines is proposing, maybe even to the extent that they wouldn't participate at all. If, if Des Moines feels so strongly about this, I mean, there's, you know, not, not everyone is in agreement. There's not consensus yet around, around the entire project. And so some communities are getting a little frustrated that Des Moines would take the position that they are just on, on the governance itself.
Right, but they do have a big chunk of the funding, huge chunk of funding compared to the other groups. So, so, but that's not up for, that's not being discussed tonight, but that is still out there.
Yes, yes, we're, we're, yeah, we're waiting for the feedback from all the cities, which again, the mayor mentioned, that will probably be Des Moines' request, and then the Central Iowa Water Trails Group will have to decide what they want to bring back to the other communities or to all the communities for a final twenty-eight E agreement. Or, excuse me, the bylaws.
I wish the mayor good luck in resolving that issue. I'm sure it'll all work out.
I guess, so our part is twenty-five thousand roughly.
Yes.
And I guess I why, why do we need this? What is the greater benefit to being part of this?
I think that the way that I've convinced myself it's, it's, it's a good idea is that, you know, our piece of the water trail is just a piece of the larger water trail system. And if somebody gets in at Seventieth Avenue and they start floating along, pretty soon they're going to run into the Des Moines River and eventually end up downtown. But when they cross those jurisdictions, they're not, they're, they're not necessarily going to know that they're crossing those jurisdictions. So there has to be some consistency in the way that, you know, those, those bodies of water are regulated, signage, you know, the hours. So this conservancy then
Is there a similar deal for the bike trails?
No, no. No, but maybe there should be. Maybe there should be. This is, you know, this, the, the structure of this would be similar to what you see with Central Park in Washington, or in, in New York City. You know, you have this massive area, and it could have been, you know, a lot of different pieces of a park. But instead, they have a conservancy. But instead they have a conservancy that, you know, has responsibility for the entire park area so that it, it works together and people have, you know, certain expectations when they're in one part, part of the park as opposed to another part of the park. So that's, that's kind of the, as I think about it, that's, that's the purpose behind it. Just to make sure that, that, you know, this larger water trail system that has 189 launch sites and, you know, the, um, you know, the, 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 huge water features down in downtown Des Moines, that it all kind of, it, it, it looks like one system to anyone that uses it.
Well, and there, uh, there's also the point that like a trail or like a road, if, if when a trail or the water trail goes through your, your community and you decide that, uh, you're going to do a cleanup or you're going to do, uh, rest, trail rest or shoreline restoration or whatever in your section, and you're going to say, well, we're going to be doing this project so you won't be able to use the water trail now. I mean, if that were happening individually, then the whole system kind of goes down. It's kind of like when I ride my bike down to the farmer's market on Saturdays. For years, there's construction projects and you get to a certain point, it's like, well, the trail's closed. You know, and you're, you've got trail, great trail in Johnston, but when you get to a certain point, it gets crappy trail. That puts off the whole experience. So that's the way I see it. It, it's transportation through different developments, communities.
Did I read something in the paper that Warren County did not want to go forward? And if so, then how does that affect us?
Um, uh, you know, I think part of if cities decide to opt out and, and, um, you know, it may mean that, um, cities or counties decide to opt out, it may mean that the, the distribution of funds would be different. Each of the cities left may have to have additional funding in order to, to get to their, their budget numbers. So, um, that's probably the, the impact that I would see as far as funding for the, um, Central Iowa Water Trails.
But if they weren't funded, would they still be involved in governance?
I don't, uh, you know, I, I don't believe they would be. Um, I think that they, you know, anybody that wants to participate would need to participate both financially and, um, which, you know, gives them the opportunity to be a part of the governance as well.
But we don't envision, I mean, we're not, I mean, this doesn't, we're not throwing money into this project, right? Other than the investments we'd be in our own facilities. So when you say fund.
No, they're, they're, yeah.
They're funding 25,000 a year, right?
Right. Right.
Yeah, for us, yeah.
Right. Yeah. So there, there, there's a funding formula that they have created, um, that we, our share is 25,000. Um, part of that is related to population. Part of it's related to how many access points you're going to have. And then, um, uh, I think, let's see, there's three factors into that, but I know two of them are population and one of them's the number of accesses, but can't recall the third. I don't have.
I can't ever remember the third one either, Jim. Are there any questions or concerns that you would like for us to take back to the group? Or what is generally, what is your, uh, what is your thought? Is that for the whole group, Mayor?
Yeah. My thought is I'm in favor of.
Yeah, I'm fine. I don't have any concerns. I mean, it's, I, I think regional cooperation is good and you have to fund it somehow. And this is pretty minimal. I mean, DART has got its own funding approach and all these different regional entities have their own funding approach. As long as it stays in the $25,000, I mean, we, we have, we're funding all of our stuff kind of on our own back. And some of these other projects are going to be funded probably with other money that are, that we didn't get. Um, but that's, I don't see that as a big problem.
I'm supportive.
The other, the other factor in the funding is the drainage area. So they're, they're considering like, for example, how much drainage area do we have into the, um, the total system of 150, um, miles of, of creek and river frontage? So that, that's the, the third item that they considered in the funding formula. Well, what I'm hearing is, uh, that we are supportive or interested in still working on this project. And I think like other communities, we just need to wait and see if there's going to be any proposed changes after everybody gives feedback in the 28E. And then we'll make, um, eventually we'll come back for council consideration.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Let's, uh, should we, um, should we pick up the, yeah, let's pick up the Q? Six Q from the, um, or I guess it's five Q from the consent agenda? Consider resolution number 21, yeah, consider resolution number 21 dash 91 entering into a 28E service agreement between the city of Johnston, the ARL for animal shelter services. Chief, do you want to lead us in that discussion?
Yes, ma'am. Been happy to. Um, originally with the work session, we had kind of a two-part discussion going. One involved an action item on the consent agenda. One did not. Um, I'll, I'll start on the first one and we can do the, the action item. If you prefer to have the entire conversation, um, we can do that as well. If you prefer to have that on the next meeting, we can work through it. But the, the action item was in reference to, uh, a 28E renewal, uh, with the Animal Rescue League for shelter services. Give you a, a little bit of history on that. Um, here as I can tell, and my dates might be off a little bit, but about 2015 was the last time that we entered into an agreement with the Animal Rescue League and Polk County Sheriff's Office for assistance with animal control. What precipitated this was, was the sheriff's offices has looked at their model and, and reinitiated their program. Uh, so they canceled our, our agreement that we were serviced through with them for assistance with animal control. Um, a couple of years ago, the police department had instituted a community service officer, a civilian position to help with patrol. And one of the primary responsibilities of that position was, was working through this animal control element. So the, the fact that the sheriff's office canceled that contract really wasn't a great concern to us. They, they went to a, a different system where before it was kind of an à la carte, pay as you go, fee-based structure. And, and their new vision of that was to have a, an annual recurring fee that to the city of Johnston would cost in excess of about $10,000 a year for access to their animal control unit. Uh, we, we don't need that. Um, so, so we went ahead and just let that agreement expire once they gave us notice and continue on with our community service program with animal control. But in, in the course of that, the Animal Rescue League, uh, wanted to, to revisit their structures with all the individual relationships that they have throughout Polk County providing animal control shelters. Uh, so with that, this 28E i- is a, a renewal of that agreement. It's, it's, it's kind of resetting of the fee-based structure and, and it really gives them one roadmap to deal with, with all the individual relationships that they have throughout the county for municipalities to support animal control shelters. So the, the action item tonight, uh, as far as that resolution 2191 i- is entering into that 28E agreement with the Animal Rescue League for the purpose of shelter services. The agreement will be, uh, looked at annually. Don't anticipate it having to be renewed annually. It'll just be a matter of if there's an update to fee structures, we'll look at how that's going to, to work out. But this provides consistency to the Animal Rescue League. It really memorializes the process that we've already been working with them through for shelter services. So this is just an, an update in, in a 28E agreement.
Council, any questions for the chief? Is any member of the public wanting to comment on this?
Seeing none.
Is there a motion to approve resolution, resolution number 21 dash 91?
Move approval.
Second.
You have a motion and a second? Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Temple?
Yes.
Motion passed. Chief, how long do you think the discussion on the other item will take?
That's difficult to say, Mayor. Um, from my perspective, it won't be very long, but I'm not sure, uh, how much other council members wish to engage in the discussion.
What's the pleasure of the group? Do we want to hold it over to the next meeting or do we want to have the discussion tonight? Jim, do we have room for it on the next, uh, council agenda?
If, uh, the work session at the next council agenda, I believe, is, uh, pretty much full. Um, but, uh, you know, we certainly could squeeze it in, um, somewhere on the agenda, whether it's under staff comments, uh, or, you know, somewhere else. It probably, I'm not, is, is it going to be, it's not going to be an action item, Dennis, right? It's just going to be a discussion item?
Correct. I, I just need some definitive guidance from the council. Um, so if, if there's no action to be taken, I just need some, some direction so that we can move forward with Plan A or Plan B.
So I, I think we can get it somewhere on either the work session or council agenda. The work session's pretty full, but what we can certainly have a conversation at the next meeting.
Well, it's 9:15. Um, you want to just suck it up and move forward?
Next meeting.
Next meeting. Okay.
All right. Next meeting.
Sounds like, uh, at least the loudest voices say next meeting. Okay. Is that, is that fine with you, Chief?
Yes, that's no problem. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, we do have one additional item under the non-consent and that is to consider approval of, approval of claims in the amount of $431,329.45.
Move approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Temple?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Motion passed. City administrator, staff comments, Jim?
I just got two quick things I want to mention. Just a reminder to the council that we do have our oral, oral argument, oral arguments before the Supreme Court, um, on the Xenia lawsuit. And that is scheduled for, uh, April 15th. And, um, uh, so I know some of you were interested, maybe listening in on that. And we're, we'll see if there's a link to, to listen to the, to the, uh, court proceedings. And then the other item, just wanted to remind everybody that, uh, April 19th and April 20th is the spring cleanup for this year. And, um, so it, it follows pretty much the same, um, program we've had in the past. Same, there hasn't really been any changes in what will be picked up and what won't. It, probably the biggest issue we have is the volume. Sometimes people put a lot of trash out on the curb. And so we have, we try to educate the public as well as we can to make sure that they don't put any more than a, a pickup truck load out there. But every year we do get people to put way out, way too much, um, garbage on the event, but we'll, we'll work through it. That's all I had this evening.
Okay. City council comments? Councilman Evans? Councilwoman Martin?
Uh, I have nothing.
Councilman Coke?
Pass.
Councilman Temple?
Pass.
We're counting on you, Councilman, ready?
I don't have anything.
And I don't either. It's been a long night. Uh, thanks for everybody's patience, uh, again, uh, one of these situations where we just had to be flexible and nimble and we got through it. So appreciate everybody's, uh, extra effort. So thanks so much. Enjoy the rest of your evening. We are adjourned.
Thank you, guys. Good night.